Is Councilmember Blue Bar on? I can't.
I don't see him.
I talked to him earlier and I couldn't remember if he, if he's gonna be able to participate. Let me look here.
I don't see him on the list.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, I don't see him.
Okay.
I was just texting him right before I joined, so let me see what he said. He's away from his laptop until after lunch.
Okay, all right. Me too. See ya. All right. Mayor, I'm ready whenever you are then.
All right. Sure, one second. Let me. All right. Floor is yours. So we're gonna start off just a overview. We're gonna go over the agenda and then I did invite Dr. Chloe to give us just a quick rundown of what is happening with COVID. As everyone knows, we are having a spike in cases. Dr. Chloe is an expert. Will give us just a brief 15-minute kind of overview of what the situation's like, just so that we as city leaders know what is happening firsthand and can ask very few questions. This is her day off, by the way, so we're gonna go really easy and on her end. Like I said, the whole point of this education not to try to talk to the policy or anything. But we'll have her on after the review of the agenda. And so if both have another meeting scheduled, that's fine. But I want to make sure that we had an opportunity to just get an update. So first, we'll go with Bob. What do we got?
Thank you, Mayor. First page, you've got three proclamations. And you've got two persons on the public agenda. On page two, number one is the approval of the TIF project plan.
Everybody else here?
I'm sorry? Are you having? Can everybody hear me all right?
Yeah, you're coming through loud and clear.
Yeah, you're fine.
Okay, I think I'm okay now.
Okay. So I'll take back all the things I said about the mayor. The, on page two, the, okay, so we've got the public hearing on the TIF project plan for Riverside housing. It's, in the project plan, there would be approval of $700,000 in TIF funds for infrastructure. And that $700,000 would be, the TIF bonds for that $700,000 would be guaranteed by the developer. There's another $1 million for riverbank and path improvements. And the, those bonds would be, or those are permits to be made on a pay-as-you-go basis. So the city has done everything it can to minimize its risk associated with the TIF for this project. It would provide up to 40 single-family homes on the development.
Bob, staffs worked with me on providing some additional documentation on this. So if any council members would like that, they can just let me know. It's just kind of an explanation of the community involvement that's been taking place and the complaints that we got on this property before this project.
Good.
Okay. Number two is something you don't have very often. It's a de-annexation, but it's really just primarily for right, right-of-way on a street. You'll see in the council report, it actually goes back to previous council action to try to clarify maintenance responsibilities on 37th Street North and on Mays. We will be giving up some right-of-way in exchange. We're taking maintenance responsibility. We'll have all the property at the intersection of those two streets. And this is actually gonna save us some money in terms of maintenance responsibilities.
Yep.
Number three is an adjustment to various speed limits on city streets based on either information we had from speed studies or also to reflect developments that are, have been constructed and additional traffic that we're seeing on streets. So you'll see some drop in speed limits on the streets listed in your council report. On page three, number four, this is an extension or actually a renewal of an agreement that we've had with the City of Derby for the purchase of water. It would be a 23-year renewal of that agreement. The one thing I will note is that it provides for rates in two different ways. They would continue under their current arrangement where they basically guarantee a purchase of water in terms of a certain number of gallons, even if they don't utilize those gallons. But then they are contemplating building a water treatment plant. If they do that, then we would go to a different rate system that would not penalize them for that, but would allow them to mix their water sources between City of Wichita and their new plant. Alan, is there, did I say that right? Is there anything else you want to add to that?
That was right, Mr. Manager. One, one thing to note is that this does not have a material impact on the amount of revenues that we would be collecting. And actually, it's beneficial. They would be using their new water treatment plant to carve off some of the peak demands that we have to size our system up to, and so it's a win-win.
Thank you, Alan. That's all I've got on page three. I will point out on page, number five on page three, when you see the quarterly, you will see the impact of COVID-19 in our financials. And Mark Manning will go over that with you. But you'll, you'll notice a deficit position for being projected at this time. That's it on page three. Nothing on page four. On page five, just want to highlight number three, A. Some good news, and that is we're, we're making headway in the Gilbert and Mosley contamination area. Because of that, and the reduction in the size of the plume, we do need to put new wells in to measure the continued movement of the plume. And then we were able to abandon or decommission 56 current wells. And this contract would have a consultant that would go ahead, BGS, that would help supervise the contractors' work for the installation of the wells and the decommissioning of wells. That's all I have on page five. On page six, you have a settlement of a claim related to the NIC. And it's a $20,000 claim. We believe that's a fair settlement for their obligation under NIC. Number nine is your annual approval of the pool funds investment policy. No changes from last year's policy. Page seven, number 10, this goes back to the process change that you've implemented. That is, the council's had a public hearing already on this item, Wesley's Medical, Wesley Medical Center. This action would allow them to go ahead and issue $40.8 million IRBs to remodel and equip a portion of Wesley Medical Center. Just a reminder, it's a creation of 66 new jobs and an average salary of $60,000. Number 13 is the construction of a playground in District Three. And this is using some of the remaining funds from the Hyatt sale that were allocated to District Three. Page eight, this is an annual grant, but I just wanted to highlight it because of the work that's done under the grant. We have received $141,000, have a local match of about $28,000 in order to hire two full-time and one part-time position to provide counseling and other support services for victims of violent crime. And then 15 is the settlement of a claim related to a motor vehicle accident. And that, that's all I have.
Excellent. Questions for the manager? See none? With that, we'll go in with, again, just a 15-minute update from the doctor on what they're seeing on the ground. We're getting a lot of news reports and updates about COVID. So I wanted to give everyone a chance to hear it from someone who works in the hospital, but also if we have any questions, we can ask directly of a professional. So Chloe, thank you for being with us.
Well, thanks for inviting me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we are in Kansas now, 10 months into the COVID-19 pandemic. Wichita and the metro area and the county have done actually a surprisingly good job when you compare us to other areas until about the last six weeks. Because of the early mask mandates and the early closures, we kept our penetrance of the disease really low, actually below one per thousand in the community, which was strikingly low when you compare us to communities of the same size and similar demographics. If you look at Omaha, Kansas City, Tulsa, Oklahoma City, and then much larger, but St. Louis and Denver, we were wildly underaffected. That is no longer true. We are one of the most rapidly growing communities. In the last three weeks, what we've seen is a doubling of the hospital census. So if you remember when the group of physicians spoke to you guys before, this is a two-week incubation followed by roughly two weeks of illness. It is highly communicable. And what we're seeing is hospitalizations rise anywhere from four to six weeks after your first set of infections. So what we are seeing in the hospital now is following Labor Day. So the Labor Day boom followed by the secondary infections from that. The hospitals are both full. We run 90-plus percent capacity in our ICUs on a normal day in Wichita. We are now running, both hospitals have, their main COVID ICU is full. Their secondary and contingency ICUs are starting to fill. The hospitals have entire, our entire floor wards that were set up for these patients are now starting to exceed their capacity, and we are moving into contingency modes for that. With regards to surgical procedures, there's always concern about something called elective procedures. I want to clarify what that means. Elective procedures are surgical procedures that are not emergent. That means that they are not something that is immediately life-threatening or something that's highly morbid. So removing a cancer, for example, would not be considered an elective procedure, but someone who has very bad joint disease and is immobile because of it, that knee or hip that they need to be repaired or fixed could be considered an elective procedure. For the person who that is, that's not a very elective issue. Unfortunately, what this has done is although the hospitals have not yet canceled these procedures, their surgical governance continues to meet repeatedly. And they've actually started prioritizing and removing some of those cases from the OR burden so that we have priority for patients who are in-house to receive emergent or urgent procedures. When you look at the demographics of our patients, we are seeing primarily local patients and our standard referral base. A few weeks ago, you may have heard press releases about how we accepted patients from out of state. We do that routinely, especially from Northern Oklahoma, because that's our referral area. We share community with them. We also accept patients from critical access hospitals in Kansas. And as you know, those are much fewer in number and they have far fewer resources than we do. The patients that we accepted from out of state were being sent in for highly specialized care. Wesley has an ECMO program, which is an extracorporeal membrane oxygenation or basically outside-of-the-body life support program. There were no available beds in any of the other programs available between Northern Texas and Oklahoma into Arkansas. So that's why we were receiving those patients. The majority of the patients remain in the ICU, more than half at both hospitals. So almost two-thirds actually are in the ICU at any given time. Because of advances in how we're taking care of this, we are trying to maintain them off of the ventilator as we are able to. Unfortunately, that's not possible for the majority of our patients. Once patients are on the ventilator, their average stay on the ventilator is anywhere from two to four weeks. Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else.
So just one. Well, first, thank you and the staff at Wesley and at Ascension as well for everything you are doing for our community. I did just wanted to ask a question about, it begins with an R, the name of the drug that was recently.
Remdesivir?
Yes, it was recently approved. Is that available in Wichita? Has it been successful? Are we making traction, I guess?
Remdesivir's data is mixed. It's best used early in disease when patients first develop symptoms, often before they're in the hospital. And then early on in the course of disease when they have initial drops in their oxygen level. We've been using Remdesivir for months here. We have it. Our access to it is stable right now, but it has very strict criteria of who we, who we give it to because we can't, we can't use it on people who are multiple weeks out in disease. It's not effective in that group, and we can't misuse our supply of it. We have been consistently using steroids, which has been the only thing to, medicine-wise, to decrease mortality in these patients, which means decrease the risk of death. I will say that the only consistent treatments that we've seen that consistently improve outcomes in these patients are high-quality medical care, which is a specific group of cares in the ICU. That requires a lot of personal effort from our staff. One of the things I think is really important for you guys to understand is how many of our healthcare workers are getting sick. Both hospitals are struggling right now with nursing staff and respiratory therapy staff and aides, even physicians in subspecialties because of acute illness. We cannot be in the hospital when we are acutely ill. Our nursing staff is, is being rapidly diminished. And the type of nursing, it's not interchangeable. I'm talking about critical care nurses specifically. These are nurses who are highly trained and have a specialized set of skills. And they're difficult to get a hold of. So both hospitals have been very proactive about trying to get additional nursing support for our system. We're also just short in Wichita normally. So this is an area where we have struggled for years to maintain adequate staffing in our ICUs simply because we don't have enough of these nurses who are trained in this, who stay in the Wichita metro area. That said, in a national pandemic, we do not have a resource pool to pull from. So we are short, so is everywhere else around us. And so whoever has the best options for these nurses or is closest to them is going to get them to come stay there.
Just a quick follow-up on that. The critical care nurses, are these, because my line thinks about collaboration with community resources. And I'm wondering, are these two-year degrees, four-year degrees, advanced nurses? Is there a way to, and work with our higher education institutions to possibly get some practicums? People trained enough to help? Is there any, any way that, you know I'm going with this, I guess?
I think there are lots of ways that you guys can support nursing education and support people going into critical care. I will say that, so my background, I'm a pulmonary and critical care physician. I'm the medical director for the ICU at Wesley. I am a co-director for our ECMO program. It is a specialty, and it is something where it is not appropriate for everyone to go into. It requires a certain emotional nature and a certain kind of hardening of how you handle things because we are used to seeing death in the ICU. It's not uncommon. It's an unfortunate side effect of critically ill patients. What we are seeing right now is far in excess of what we're used to seeing. So even my, my great ICU nurses, who I love and who are an invaluable part of our team, they are being pushed to their brink. And these are people who have done this for years or decades and are, and are capable and competent and wonderful at this. What you're seeing is elements of PTSD. And so it's very hard, I think, to convince young nurses right now to come into this field. I think that certainly if the governance can work in ways to help promote this and educate, the problem is, is that this is not education that we can implement and get people into this very quickly. They require months of orientation and they require months of specialty training. There's even secondary certification that can be achieved in this field. These are not advanced practice or APP-level nursing. Those tend to work within specialties in medicine. So I have an APP, an APRN who works with me. We have PAs and nurse practitioners who work in the hospital with the hospitalists and other groups. So this is, is true RN nursing, but they are critical care nurses.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions for the doctor? From staff or really from anyone, because we're all dealing with this together, trying to help out. I want to make sure that we take advantage of your time. Thank you again. There are no questions. Thank you again for being available to us. I do understand that this is your, you're tough, and we want to be able to protect your mental health as well. So it's, you've gone above and beyond by having to do some work on your day off. So thank you so much for doing that and keeping us updated on this crisis and being available.
Can I chip in one more piece of information that I think is really important? When you talk to the contact tracers for our county and for the state, less than a third of people, actually, it's even far less than that, it's about a fifth, are responding to the questions because they don't have to, because it's not mandated. So what we're having a very hard time is tracking and tracing. So we don't know outside of the hospital where these patients are. When we're in the hospital, people are much more forthcoming with us about where these cases are being spread. And what we are seeing is that they are from group gatherings, small and large, indoors. So these are parties in the house. These are family, people who are coming together with people who they don't live with. These are churches. These are extracurricular activities from schools. There's mixed data on whether schools themselves are increasing this. I will say that it doesn't appear that the children are doing it, but the secondary activities seem to be a significant risk factor. I don't think that the burden of controlling a pandemic should fall on children. It should fall on the adults. So schools should not be expected to close, to stop a pandemic. But we need to be looking at things that are notoriously causing this. And so this is restaurants, bars, and indoor group gatherings, which are spreading this. And they're spreading it rapidly. The other thing we know is that there's about a 60% chance that if someone in your household gets it, your household members will also get it. So if you come home and you are pre-symptomatic, 60% of the households that you are exposed to will get this disease. There's new data that came out recently that says we are probably in a, we have a mutation that appears to be more contagious, which is concerning.
So is this in addition to the mutation from Italy that came over? Because we know that it mutated in Europe, and that's the majority of what we came, came through New York. Are you, are you saying that there might be a second mutation that might have made that one even more contagious? Or are we still talking about the first mutation?
No, this is a second one. This is recently released data. It's not clear how significant it is, but it appears to be more easily spread with this mutation.
Okay. And the indoor events, just from your experience, that are being seen as, or cited, I guess, for spreading this more, is it because people are kind of putting a guard down and not wearing masks? Or even with the masks, are we seeing an increase in spread? Is there any indication on, on that?
I think that there's several misconceptions about how this spreads. So masking is incredibly important. Is it preventative? It definitely reduces the likelihood of transmission. And it can apparently reduce the viral load that you receive if you are exposed and possibly make your disease less severe. Okay? So masking's important, but masking cannot be done in isolation. Social distancing is also important. And social distancing, I think, has become a term that maybe people don't fully understand what it means. Social distancing means you don't spend time around people that you don't live with. So we all have to do that to participate in our community. We have to go to get groceries. We have to participate in our workplaces and those kind of things. Encouraging workplaces to have people work from home as much as possible is vital. Encouraging people not to eat out in restaurants, not to have gatherings outside of their own nuclear family, not to have large church gatherings, not to have parties, not to have sporting events indoors. All of these things are vital to reducing the spread. So masking, social distancing, and then the last part is hand hygiene and not touching your face. So this disease, we initially were concerned that it might be fomite spread, which is we touch things and then we bring them to us. The only way that that really works is close contact and aerosols. This is spread through droplets. And so minor, small viral particles, they'll be aerosol, they'll be airborne, but you can't get enough of them. What it is are the droplets. They have large numbers of viral particles, which you then become infected by. So the goal here is minimizing all of, maximizing mask use, maximizing hand hygiene, and minimizing social contacts outside of your nuclear family.
So it's not just six feet, stay six feet away from people? It's also limit your accessibility to folks you don't live with?
Right. So six feet and 15 minutes is a guideline. It's not a guarantee. So just because you stood six feet away from somebody in a building doesn't mean you're not sharing air. There's recirculated air from ventilation, particularly as we go into the winter months and people start spending more time indoors. This is going to be a big deal. Add to this, right now, the hospitals will be in big trouble if we have a standard flu season. So influenza is a big burden on hospitals, as is RSV in children and other bronchiolitis diseases. So upper airway infections, these are things that tend to cause acute illness and pneumonia. As we get into that season, if we have a large number of those cases, which we normally do every fall and winter, we are going to be in trouble with regards to how we manage these patients. While we can create physical beds for them, we can close our PACU, we can close our ORs, and we can put people in those rooms. What I don't have is people to take care of them. And right now, Sedgwick County is nearing 20% positive testing despite increased overall testing. So we are testing as high as we have tested in the last six weeks. In fact, we're testing much higher than we were at our peak at 14 back in the summer. So even with increased testing, more of those tests are coming back positive, and that rate continues to climb. A week ago, we were in the teens, about 14 or 15. When you look at our case rate, we're looking at one and a half nearing two per thousand at this point. Four weeks ago, we were at .6 per thousand. So we are having a significant increase in the number of people who are around us who are maybe asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic, who have the potential to spread this disease. And that's where we're getting in trouble. Some cities are looking at things like a two-week shutdown. If you can break the chain, so for two weeks, you don't do things, you close things down, the potential to reduce this is massive. The problem is, is that there's also economic concerns and mental health concerns and other pieces that you have to look at and control of this. What I will say is if the hospitals become overwhelmed, this is what we saw in New Orleans and in Houston and New York, what happens is mortality from all diseases goes up. So when you have too much happening in a hospital and your resources are limited, whether it's staff resources, whether it's specialist resources, like someone that does things like I do, whether it's medications to be able to take care of these patients, whether it's PPE equipment, whether it's ventilators, whatever it is, patient care declines when your hospitals become overwhelmed. The other thing that happens is that you do have to start rationing or limiting care. And that means that people who have strokes or heart attacks or things like that, they're being sent to facilities maybe that aren't handling this overwhelming load of COVID. Well, the places that are handling COVID are your highest acuity care. We also see trauma in those facilities, so that level of care would probably be in trouble. So this is a big deal. The goal of all of these actions is to prevent getting to that state. Because when you get to that point, all levels of mortality go up, not just COVID mortality.
Well, appreciate the update. I wish that, appreciate you shooting us straight with it and letting us know how severe this is. And we'll stay informed. And thank you again for allowing your time with us to give us a bit of an update. Is there any questions for the doctor? All right, hopefully people didn't just leave. But anyways, it's a tough, it's a tough topic to have, I guess. And reality is, we're leaders of the city. We've got to face it head-on and be realistic with what is happening, what's going on. So I admire you for all your work you do, and thank you again for giving us an update. And thank you for those council members who did stay on and were able to kind of hear news that no one really wants to hear. So with that, thank you, doctor, and thank you for always being accessible to us. And, oh, not, I mean, not always, but when you are accessible to us, thank you for taking some time and helping us understand this. None of us, a city hall are medical doctors, so it's good to get a firsthand perspective. So thank you and enjoy your day.
Thank you, Dr. Steinzauer, for joining us. Really appreciate it. This is Vice Mayor Clay Com.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions or nothing pressing, if there is no objection, then I will say that we adjourned. See no objections. We are adjourned. Thank you all.